You skipped that typing class in high school, didn't you?
Call to order the regular meeting of the Chisholm School Board, Independent School District 695. Please take. Oka.
Satter here. Rice.
Here.
Coretti Simon.
Here.
Laffey here. Rahah.
Here.
Orchard Casey.
Here.
Any members in the audience like to join us for public comment? If not, we will move on to recognitions of guests and visitors. Director Rahah, you said Aubrey Hoover, you invited Aubrey to join us?
Yes, and she acknowledged, she said that she would be here and.
Okay. Okay. We will overlook Ms. Hoover and see if she joins us at a later time. At this time, Injensa. If you're ready with your presentation in Jordan. Just to let our audience know that we are delayed just a little bit by some technical difficulties. And Injensa will be making a presentation for us on design of the new facility. And they are up and running.
Should be pulling up in a second.
Directors, just in case we were curious, as I was curious, on your plans given to us by Injensa and formally ARI, they are now called Woodset.
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 Yep.
And Woodset is out of order.
We're still in the same offices, but it's out of pivoting, out of the loop. And 12 other additional offices throughout the state.
Okay, thank you very much.
There we go. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Jordan with Injensa, Luke with Injensa, Carl with Woodset. I'm here tonight for the board update for the design development presentation on November 13th, 2023. Agenda, what we're going to cover, the design development update, design development estimate, and then the budget update and our recommendation. So to start with, I do have the drawings. They went out with your handout, so they have BD 11 by 17. I'll pull them up on the screen here, and Carl's going to speak to them. Just a precursor as far as the change from last time to this time. Last time, we identified some budget issues, we made some adjustments to help with the budget. So I just laid out some bullet points here that Carl can talk in a little more detail to. Reducing learning stairs, relocated and reduced toilet fixtures, which is kind of a byproduct of that learning stair, made a change to precast wall construction type, revise some of the mechanical units on the roof, and then eliminate doors between classrooms. So that being said, Carl's just got kind of a brief overview of what those are. And Carl, feel free to tell me to zoom in or anything, but first thing, we'll start with the civil site. So if you guys can all see on the screen, civil site plan. And if you guys need me to zoom in on anything, let me know. Fairly consistent with what we've been showing, not a whole lot of change here. Starting with the bus turnaround loop, we've been able to save a lot of core street as much as possible. So we've got that revised to save a lot of that street and make that radius fit. Kind of going counterclockwise around the site. We do have proposed building by others, so that is more of a placeholder for a space where the bus garage will go, that's not a part of this project at this time, as well as parking. So this stuff is not currently in the drawing, but we're also showing that master plan, and we're thinking about it. We have space for it. Above that, we have usable green space area that's kind of open for any type of practices or maybe fire ed or anything like that. We did have a meeting last week where we talked about, we're going to look to fence that area in so we can control access there. So approximate space, 250 by 150 feet. We have the new parking lot with elementary pickup drop off to the main entrance. We also have the head start entrance for pickup drop off. We're still working through how that flow is all going to work. I know we talked about traffic backing up into the street. There's going to be some, maybe I'll say, training of parents as far as knowing where to go with what kids that you have. So that's going to be a factor, but for all intents and purposes, we've got the site down, the parking lot down. We just have to work through that traffic flow a little bit and work with the city as well. So I believe we're showing the same amount of parking spots that we lost or within within a minimal amount. So I think we're overall net within like five parking spaces.
From what we currently have?
Correct. Now, down here, we picked up a couple at the, what will be the new front office admin area. And then we'll have high school pickup drop off as well. Building additions outlined, we show, that really hasn't changed. We show green space where we met last week to talk through. That's going to be the playground area, so we need to figure out how that all lays out. So again, tentative plan is to fence that out for security. And then potentially have separate fencing for head starts. I know we're talking through, we likely are going to relocate head start playground equipment and then work through entrances as far as which kids are entering through which set of doors. So I think the last we settled on was the older kids could come all through the door, all back by kitchen and receiving. And then we have the kitchen and receiving parking lot where we can have our deliveries and parking for staff, maintenance, kitchen staff, those folk. So big overview, not a whole lot has changed on the site plan, just continuing to develop that home that in. At the D phase, these drawings are in a 65 to 75% complete range. So not 100% complete, our construction drawings, which would be the next step, will take us from that 65, 75 to that 98% complete and ready for bid. Any questions on the site plan?
Just one, you said probably a net reduction of five?
I think it was within five, and I can't remember off the top of my head.
And that's not too big of a deal. I think more of the big deal is we're combining now a school that's closing, and we're taking all those cars and bringing them up here. And I think the ratio is still one handicap to every 25 regular car spaces, is that somewhere in there?
I'm not sure exactly on what the ratio is, but we do have a design for 88 parking spots, handicap parking spots, so that we do meet code, and we have at least the minimum spots that we need to cover that.
I think we did, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did actually look at the number of spots where currently we'd need, including the Von.
Right.
Because that, what you're saying is correct.
That was 42 or 46.
Camera of the number. But when we did that.
Yeah, okay. We're talking net, it adds in the Von. It's not, not early on in the site.
Okay.
Add the Von in with that.
Okay, that's what.
Yep, well, good question. Anything else?
Just one, I know you probably said it, but I had my hearing made out. It says proposed building 80 by 96?
56.
96. Proposed building, like?
That's, that's a placeholder for the bus garage.
I thought so.
Yep.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep. So not designed yet or anything by that means. All right, anything else? Okay, we'll move on to floor plans, and Carl, I'll let you speak to that, maybe if you want to.
Sort of here, I think it'd be easier that way.
Yeah, absolutely.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Carl Larsen, architect with, with Seth. I will be the signing architect on this job as well. I've been involved with this project since about the concept level phase. I wasn't involved at the early stages, but everything from concept moving forward, I've been pretty heavily involved in. Very, very similar to what Jordan was talking about with the site. The floor plan has remained fairly consistent. Over the last couple of months, we haven't made any major changes to the overall footprint or the basic concept behind the design. The major spaces have remained the same. You still enter into the addition just north of the existing gym. You're going to be met with the new gymnasium and the new locker room spaces. That's going to open up into the large new commons space, which also doubles as the main secure entrance into the facility for Alabama elementary students. Directly adjacent to that is going to be the kitchen space. We do have a slightly new layout for mechanic electrical room and the toilet rooms, which I'll get to in just a second. And then for the most part, the classroom wing has remained consistent over the last few months as well. We've been here a number of times to review that with staff, and we feel like we have it pretty well dialed in at this point. The changes we have made have been mostly budgetary changes. After the design development estimate came in, and we saw that we had, we were just slightly over the budget that we're shooting for. We came up with just a handful of items that we could take a look at and evaluate, and we did decide to move forward with those with the approval of the district. First and foremost, the, the major change, the exterior, is going to be that we went to a precast concrete shell or envelope around the building instead of the steel structure that we had before. So there is both a material savings and a construction labor savings in doing so. With the steel, we had a little bit more flexibility in the type of openings that we have, the expanses of glass where they, where they fit into the design. It's going to be a little bit more rhythmic with the precast, just due to how those panels are put together. But precast comes as a one, one-piece shell. It's going to show up, they're going to tilt it up on site, and it's going to be your structure, your insulation, your finish on the outside, your finish on the inside. So you're going to go from one week, you're going to see just concrete footings. Two weeks later, you're going to have an entire building put up instead of all the different labor disciplines associated with the steel structure and the insulation, and then the metal skin and, and everything along those lines. So the precast did provide quite a significant savings to the project. And it is going to give us just a few more items to, to evaluate on the exterior aesthetic of the building. So we are currently looking at that right now. I don't have the total cost savings, but I'm guessing you're going to get to that unless you talk about the budget. But that's, that's one of the major changes we've made since the last time we presented here is that the exterior envelope is now all precast concrete panels. Another big change that we made to the interior is going to be the elimination of the learning stair in the elementary wing. You can see, we still are maintaining the learning stair in the commons space. So that's your primary circulation from the first floor to the second floor. But directly adjacent to that is going to be somewhat of a stadium-type seating. It really provides an excellent learning opportunity for classroom space, viewing space. It's, it's really a nice concept. We tried to fit that into both the commons and the elementary wing, but there is a pretty substantial cost associated with that. So we did, you know, evaluate the pros and cons, and we did eliminate that out of the elementary wing. What they did is it opened up this central core area to move the main bank of bathrooms into this space instead of that larger learning stair that had a couple of very positive domino effects as we went through. Prior to this, the main bank of bathrooms for the public space, commons, and gymnasium was down here. We were a little short on our mechanical, electrical spaces. So that opened that whole area up, and now we feel like we are hitting the needs of the district for that mechanical space, electrical space, and custodial storage. And then it also provided a very interesting opportunity to double up use of the bathroom space. So you can see here, we've got a bathroom that is accessible from the commons as well as a bathroom that is accessible from the elementary wing. During regular hours, this door in between the two spaces would remain locked and closed, and so those two spaces would be divided. But when there is a big event going on, if there's a state tournament, big basketball game going, and you've got everybody in that commons and gymnasium space and you need a few more fixtures, this door can be opened up, the doors, the elementary wing can be locked. And now you are fulfilling the code requirement obligation for the amount of bathrooms for that commons space. That allowed us to eliminate five toilet fixtures, which if you've ever been involved in construction, bathrooms are very expensive. So we were able to cut down on the amount of toilets that we were providing overall, because before we were just dedicating some to commons and gym. And then over here, we were just dedicating some to the, the elementary students. Now we can combine those uses into a single space and save on costs. Up on the upper level, it's a somewhat similar concept. We are stacking the toilets on top of the first floor. Once again, we've got a handful accessible from the walking path. Because we have top loading bleachers, it did make sense to provide some bathrooms on the upper level for larger events. And then we have the gender, gender neutral bathrooms still accessible from the elementary wing. A few more components to talk through here, but first, I just want to open up any questions on the first two items. Precast and bathrooms.
The bathrooms?
Yes.
Okay, up here on the upper level, you've got boys and girls here, and then you have a question mark.
Yeah. Let's just call that a typo right now.
Okay, well, that's the other, that's the bathroom.
That's going to be the bathroom, yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
Remember, we're 65 to 75% complete, though.
In the, in the software that we use, in the software we use, when we don't identify a label, it automatically shows up as a question mark.
Okay, fair enough.
And so we just didn't get labeled as a bathroom.
Fair enough.
That's why, yeah.
I can't remember, so what is the learning stair? It's like stairs?
It was stairs. You got just normal looking stairs. Right next to that, you're going to have kind of double stairs, bleacher-type seating. And so over the years, it's, it's been a concept that's been evolving in K-12 schools for quite a while, where kids tend to congregate on stairs, especially if you've got a big wide-open grand staircase. This allows kids to sit in a sort of, in a signed area within that staircase. You can view out, you can have presentations that they're, they're viewing. They can, you know, you could have a larger event going on in the commons space. And right here in the middle, this is more of a bleacher-type seating. And so they can be, you know, observing or viewing some presentation out in the commons space. It's a great place to congregate for students. They've been very successful in the K-12 market for some years now.
Where was the other ones, like?
The other one was right where we have. It's a little bit of a delay here. There we go. It's right where we had the bathrooms.
Okay.
Yep, and instead, we just put a standard staircase. You can see, we still have to have a stair.
Yeah.
Per coded, and so now the stair is just off to the side here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So you said the, the precast concrete walls, they have the, all the insulation already in it? So it really just saves on time as well?
Oh, absolutely.
Big projectal load faster.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the erection time of the, the building goes from two weeks to have an entire envelope. Or it, it's at two weeks with precast, what is it, do you think, for standard construction, a couple of months to get the steel up? And then you've got your framing, your metal stuff framing, and then you put your insulation on separate, and then you have to wait for the cladding to come. This does it in a two-week time period, so it saves quite a bit on labor costs.
That and structurally, it qualifies, you know, sort of done for the most part, it's 90, 90% structure complete. You can work on it, get, get on it and do all those things.
And it won't blow down with a tornado?
You know, if it's not done yet, potentially.
It's, it's about as robust as you can get.
Thanks.
Very long-lasting, yeah.
Depends on the tornado.
Yeah. A couple of the other changes, a little bit more minor than the ones I've just talked about.
Are you going to fix that?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's all, it's gone. You'll never hear that again.
The ringing bell.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
We, we did remove doors connecting each classroom on the upper level. They aren't required by code. It was a functional item that was reviewed and analyzed by some of the, the staff here as to whether or not they wanted it. There's a cost associated with it, so in the end, we did remove the, the door between each classroom.
Okay. I would have think that that would have been, I can't imagine anybody would want that.
Well, then I asked, Ms. Whis-Winner was a part of that too, so I just, is there any real function to this? She's like, no, she was, she was good with it, so we added her input, so.
Yeah. Again, you see it in some schools, you know, and so maybe you can open that door up, and if one teacher has to step out for a moment, then the adjacent teacher can observe both rooms at the same time. There are some pros to it, but in this case, the cons outweigh the pros. And then finally, one of the larger changes we made is we are moving to rooftop mechanical units or the elementary wing alone. We're still having indoor units. I'll show you up on the upper level, we have a large mechanical space. This is going to house the air handlers that serve the gym, the commons. And then we have a few more indoor for the administrative area. But the air handling units for the elementary wing are going to be located on the roof with access from this north elementary wing stair here, right here. So most of the changes we made had a budgetary impact to them. And I would say a bit more comfortable about the overall cost at this point. Any other questions?
And the weight room is coming up as a bit alternate?
I'll talk to old Dad on the spot here if you don't forget.
Yep. Any questions?
Five minutes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If anybody wants to say anything, just let us know, we can gladly hop back to it and take a look.
And with the air handling and all that on the roof, I mean, is there like protection? I mean, do they, I mean, obviously, we have snow all the time, so I mean, what happens? I mean, I've seen, I've had to shovel roofs with, you know, I mean, I'm just saying with air handling, I mean, isn't that going to have to be kept clear, or how does that work?
So there's a few different options that we can have, unless you want to answer, right? Okay, so first, there, there are units that come as, with a prepackaged vestibule to them. And so that the air handler technically is indoors, but it just comes as one larger unit. They clock it right down on the roof. They are reviewing that option right now from both a functional and a budgetary concern. And then if, if we aren't able to provide that, the rooftop units these days are, they are built for this environment.
Yeah.
They, we do see them quite often. It's not like it's atypical.
Like, yeah, at one time.
They, they are built to withstand the conditions here.
It just seems like over time, I always worry about that, because, I mean, I've seen what happens over time, and you want this school to last.
Herr, Herr Von has, you know, some.
Okay.
He exchanged.
Yeah. Okay.
Any, any other questions? Okay, so the design development estimate. So basically, what we did is we went and we adjusted the estimate to reflect the changes that we made. So our total estimate after making the changes that we just discussed, the stairs, precast, chemical units, classroom doors, back nozzles, 30 million, 764, $221. Now, to Mark's question, multipurpose and fitness, total estimate for that one, 741,900 dollars. So overall, that's the estimate, but the big question is, how does that affect our overall budget? What's our, what's our target? So the next slide, now I think you guys may have a hand on to this, otherwise I can zoom in as well. Our budget summary. What Luke and I have done is we've taken a real hard look at what the costs are. We've taken a real hard look at what, what our construction costs are estimated at, as well as what funds we have available. So this is a little blurry, and I can walk around with a hard copy if we don't have one as well. I see Mike's got one. It did go up near bar package. Okay, so overall, the funding, we haven't made much of a change to funding. I know we did update our interest earnings, and we've been working with PMA to understand what those interest earnings are going to be. So what we did is we provided a updated draw schedule. I think, I don't know where the original draw schedule came from, but it was just provided of the total funds of the project and when they're projected to be spent. It's kind of simple if you think about it, that's the money sitting there in accrues interest. As you spend it, you have less to accrue interest on. So what Luke and I did is we looked at when are costs really getting hit? We know that precast is going to be a big one coming up at end of year. We know site work is a big one. So what we did is we went through at the estimate level, you know, everything we have in the estimate. We broke out when that's going to hit along the months in the project, and we provided that information to PMA. So what we did is we went back and they calculated what the actual interest earnings are going to be, knowing what those amounts are going to be as we spend it down. So we did update our interest earnings to the 2.776.
It's a really substantial increase, you know, approximately $600,000. So then it's a large impact. And we feel comfortable in, in knowing what we know now, where we are in design, when it's going to bid, and getting a better idea of the construction schedule than a year ago is, is the big difference. So that was a very positive impact to the overall budget.
So that's great news. We always expect some interest earnings for sure, but if we can hone that in and get a little more smarter, a little more dialed in, it's to our benefit right now when we are talking budget and big numbers. So great news there, otherwise, we haven't really changed anything on funding that way. Aside from that, our professional services is a fixed number. It's the same number we've had since day one, that will not change. Our project general conditions, Luke and I looked at that as far as what are we realistically going to spend on the project? The way that that budget is developed is a percentage-based budget from the beginning. So what general conditions are, are, those are the costs to run a project. So that's temp heat, propane for temp heat, temp toilets, dumpsters, all those incidentals, temporary construction fencing, maybe some signage, stuff like that. That's all those incidentals that it takes to run a project that, that are going to hit throughout the project. So what we did is we looked back at some historic data and some of the, some of the items that we've been seeing going through, and we, we adjusted that by 200,000. We pushed that to construction point to help with our budget issue.
I think I'll mention, I think I was brought up the question last time, so the case of that is in the professional services line item, we cover the plan review and permitting to keep things moving real quick. So that was kind of essentially, after reviewing it, you double counted in that percentage, we pulled that out of the general conditions line item.
Now, the next line I'm down, the FFE and technology, that's furniture fixtures, equipment and technology. We did a study there as well. That was also percentage-based. Typical, typical budgetary for classrooms, 15,000. So what we did is we went through and we counted the actual classrooms that we have, the spaces that we have that have needs, and, you know, multiplied by 15,000, adjusted for a bigger space maybe for the gym. And so we went through and said, realistically, you know, where is this number at? Now that we have classrooms, we can actually count when we have spaces. So with that, we were comfortable with reducing that budget as well by 250,000, and we shifted that as well. One of the other targets. Um, one of the other tasks that we're having is, you know, as far as, um, furniture, fixtures, equipment, tables, chairs, desks, very, pretty much anything that's not nailed down, if you can move it. If it's maybe a document camera for teachers or, um, projectors or things like that, smart boards, um, think boards, whatever you guys have. Um, that's what that budget is. So the other thing we talked about is that we know that with this building going, um, there's tables and chairs left over that they may not be new, but they're perfectly serviceable, so we can utilize the stuff that we have uh, to contribute towards having a better building overall. So we did the study there, again, we feel comfortable and we moved it down into the construction budget. So, the next is the big block of all the big numbers. Um, so line item one, building addition and renovation DD estimate. So again, that's at thirty million, seven hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-one that we estimate. Um, to, uh, what Mark had said, the seven hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred for the alternate. Um, Carl and I are talking this over a bit, and we have some options there. Um, when we look at that, um, with everything else we have planned, we have the athletic field upgrades where there is approximately six hundred eighteen thousand dollars sitting there. Uh, we have some control work that's already underway by JCI for ninety-eight thousand, so that's contracted, same stuff with the pool work. And then we also have the I triple R B dollars sitting there for projects that haven't been developed yet. Uh, overall, where that lands us right now is six hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars over budget. And that includes that alternate. So if we go back to that alternate, we identified that, that's over and above for sure what we have for funding. But if we have a good bid day, uh, that could be enough of a swing to get that. Uh, now, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I know Luke was, and I know it was a topic of discussion. We talked about the athletic field upgrades, the six hundred eighteen thousand, now that is a board decision at this point, you guys really have the power to determine how that money is used. Uh, but right now, basically, it's a pretty even swap. Uh, if those funds, say, were elected to be used for the construction project, uh, I would say I'm confident that that could fund the alternate and we would be on budget. So if those funds were slid over, um, I think we would be about seventy-eight thousand dollars under budget right now with our estimate. That being said, it's not my decision, so we need to talk about it and figure out what we wanna do. I know as far as some of that other athletic work that's there, I know that we've talked about, there's other funding sources available. Uh, but yet again, I'm not comfortable showing that we've made any changes until we've talked it over as a group and agreed upon it. Um, so, that's where, that's where I'm looking at. If that moves over, that multipurpose and fitness, um, what Carl and I were talking about is that, um, for Carl, it would be a lot less work, um, for Woodset to draw that as the base bid, the shell of it. But then the internal build out, so that'd be like the finishes, um, the flooring, all of that. That portion could be bid as an alternate, so basically, we would make the fitness and multipurpose, for the most part, base bid, just a little minimal build out on the interior here would be the alternate. Um, and Carl could speak to that in more detail as far as what that might look like. Um, but that's something that we want to present to the group tonight and get your input on. And Luke, is there anything else you wanna touch on with all this?
No, I think that was the biggest, the biggest thesis, I think we talked about a lot of these items last time. Yeah, so what does that alternate look like, let's give it, build the, have the shell there. Um, that's, that's probably the piece that would cost more to come back and build later. Um, if that were to happen, it'd be beneficial to the district to have the, that shell or the, the space, the exterior piece would all be there in the, a change, maybe that seven hundred forty-one, uh, very close to, maybe that alternate would be, we'd take roughly five hundred thousand of that and then move that into the, the base bid, and then the ultimate portion would be roughly that, the remainder of that two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And so, I'd wanna add on that too, um, why I'm saying it'd be, um, a little bit easier on Woodset, this hasn't been fully drawn yet. We're holding a space for it, we're hashing it out, we're showing what it is, but that space hasn't been fully designed out yet. Um, so that's why we wanna bring it up now, it's pretty much minimal impact to make the decision, it's just moving forward, is it shown as base bid or alternate?
So I'm aware you said, incorrect, if I'm wrong, basically, it's a swap between the two.
Basically, we would be trading the athletic field upgrades for the alternate. And, from an overall programming standpoint, from what I've, what I've been understanding, the weight room area goes away for a new front admin and we don't have a space for that. So, for me, personal opinion, from what I see, it makes sense to include that because that is a need and it's a high priority. But, obviously, district board decision.
Well, but now I thought it was already talked about, that the number on the athletic field, because we don't own it yet. We're still in talks and still figuring that out with the city. I thought we already, already said that, let's put that into the bill, I mean, do we need to have like an official vote on that? Is that why it's still on this bid?
So I think the agenda today, we have an, an official vote on this design here, so that would happen today.
Okay, okay.
So that's with the board, that's what you decided to want to do.
So we either have optimism, or we upgrade it.
And I, and what I think that we're saying is that we, we all kind of, we did quite a good discussion on the athletic field and rights last time, I just don't think we actually
I mean, we know that the athletic field needs work, but putting money from a build into something we don't own yet and designating that, I mean, are we looking at owning that field next year, that's our hope, but is that gonna happen? We don't know, I mean, everything's still up in the air, so to designate that kind of money that should go into a build, I just don't know why we would designate money to something we don't own. I mean, and I think, you know,
If we don't build that, that's not there.
There could be grants of things out there, the red space, that's not built, that's, okay.
Right, right, that's my concern too, is that if we don't do this right the first time, but we can come back and we can resurface that track in three to four years, once two, and we can fix it.
Yeah, it's not built. Yep. Yeah.
We talked about the grass and.
If we don't build that fitness center, we don't have the, the core that.
You weren't at our last meeting, were you?
We won't go back.
Are you at our?
Yeah.
Anything else?
I don't think so, uh, you know, that being said, we're operating on the assumption that that was what we wanted to do.
Yeah.
Uh, so that would put us, again, about that seventy-eight thousand under budget doing that, and we got a little bit of lag here. But so to end the presentation, Injensa recommends approving the design development package as presented and proceeding with moving those athletic funds to the construction fund, or the addition fund.
One more, one more question.
Absolutely.
I triple R B projects in the big block there, five million, one sixty-four, nine sixty-eight. That's money that we have, I'm assuming, so we're just, we can use it for the bill.
So, thank you for asking that. Uh, what we did is we went to I triple R B, we reached out to them, and we discussed the project. Um, the total pool was about eight million dollars. Uh, with that, we said, here's what we're doing on this current project, and we want to make sure that we understand what we can and can't use for it. So of that eight million dollars, we worked through, we wrote out the narrative, um, to apply most funds, and so of that, two point eight three five million is eligible, um, to help cover the thirty point seven.
Okay.
So, of that set aside, the other five point one million, um, could be eligible, but we didn't ask for it, I don't know if it truly can be or not.
Yeah.
It could be changed, it could be, the application be, can be changed, um, is what they said, if you wanna go back, if, if, depending on what bid day looks like, you could go back and, and change the application and get the okay from I triple R B. We put in that two point eight million for, um, that steam to hot water conversion at the high school, so
Yeah.
the idea was really keep that, that eight million from I triple R B and really focus that money to the high school, 'cause there, there are needs there. And, you know, we're being addressed in the, in the reference.
Okay, I see.
And so we identified items like, you know, window, remaining windows, roofing areas, top cleaning, gutters, um, auditorium seats. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, and auditorium mechanics.
I triple R B money was supposed to be dispersed throughout a number of years, correct?
It is, I believe, so I thought it was over maybe ten years.
Yeah. So it's almost like you guys have worked with the I triple R B at least three, two point eight three five for the project. The remainder would be as needed, and we could rewrite the application per se.
District one. Correct. Further approval.
My understanding was they were selling bonds on that, and the funds would be available to the district. Right away, we'll double check on, on that piece, that was my understanding, there was some conversations, but I'm not the, definitely not the expert on, on that piece. So that was, that was what I understood from the conversations.
Any other questions by the board?
So, that space that you highlighted, when you're looking at the two maps, that space that we would designate were the fitness room, is that sit above the toilets and lockers from down below then?
Yep, that would be on the second level, and then where would our access be, this is a locking track probably?
Yeah.
So there'd be a door function somewhere.
Yep, there, there was two rooms there, one was a fitness room, the other was a multipurpose room. So you see a corridor there just to the right of the bleachers, that corridor would remain, um, and
The one.
in order to add that, instead there'd be a roof directly outside those windows, it would be a fitness room, yeah. Multipurpose room right there.
Well, I do agree, we need that, I mean, I know many students that go there every morning, workout. They use it for gym, no, I don't think they use that even.
The difference would be when we build it, you know, with that being an alternate, we have a two-story building, and then that would be a one-story building, that's like, um, by moving forward, that becomes second story, two-story like the rest, and it's built right away.
There are still some options for cost saving measures too, if we absolutely need to, we can do what is called gray boxing it, where we just don't finish the inside, that's good, so we build the envelope, the shell, um, and the inside is just left basically bare for now, until there are funds to complete it, but at least.
Well, we have all that new equipment though, like, are, are you talking beyond the equipment than what we already have?
I'm, I'm talking pretty much any finishes, let's say, it didn't come in as a finished with bid, but we moved forward with completing that, the shell, the outside wall on the roof of that space, we could just leave it blank on the inside until a year or two down the road, and there are other funds. So that is an, an additional option as an alternate, instead of just not building it entirely, you could build the, the wall on the roof and leave the interior blank, until down the road.
But could you put our old equipment, because that's gonna be torn down, that will, could go in there, even if it's not
Right.
fully finished, yeah.
Yeah.
So we just have like an industrial.
It would, you know, Carl's point to just.
It would be a rock, you know, it's.
It is kind of cool, yeah.
It'd be great concrete floors, and like we have slab ones that, they're pre-cast plank.
It's a, it's a pre-cast floor there.
Pre-cast, so we'd be concrete floor in the walls, and then open ceiling to joints through it.
Yeah.
And then I, I believe we would still, either way, we're gonna size the HVAC system, I think either way, we'd still have you know, mechanical systems up in there, so that space could be used, but there wouldn't be anything in it.
Right, it wouldn't be any fan, it could, I mean, we have like that, that equipment.
I'm, I'm just curious, what, what, I mean, in a fitness room, what else does it have to be, other than the equipment and, and whatever?
You should have like a rubber floor, and, I mean, there are some things that you have to get in.
There's flooring, there could be solid, acoustic, open products, there could be a ceiling, pudding, and like that, so, so.
You see, or, yeah.
Here's like.
Yeah.
Even things like lights, you know, lights.
True.
Oh, so lights wouldn't be factored in if we didn't have that box? So just.
As an, as a, yeah, worst case, I.
It would just like a box, yeah. That's just a, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, that being said, I think what Carl was asking is that, should we still set that up as a safeguard? Or should we go all in and put it, put it, all the finishes in and just say it's all gonna be done in this part of the project?
And that's our voting on tonight?
Correct, or
We can.
we can proceed accordingly with how you.
We can vote on the plan as presented, we can vote on whether there's gonna be a swap of the two
Right.
in athletic facility versus fitness room.
And we won't know that till after bid, the bid time in January anyways, as far as specifics go?
As far as what the bids come in or what the cost is, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that being said, through our DD, um, we will work on setting that alternate up accordingly, so we've got time to have discussions as far as how it's set up, so I don't say that it necessarily has to be decided tonight, the big thing is that do we want the shell base, is it not, would be the one that we would just like direction to go from.
Yes.
Perfect.
Did you not help me? You can get some, you can get some.
One, uh, one final update then, just with the time it took us to record some of these changes, not a major impact, but right now, we're looking at having construction documents, um, due to Injensa on the nineteenth of January. We need a little bit of time to compile the bid documents and prepare the present, uh, presentation to the board. So I think we get the documents January nineteenth, we can be ready to have them to present to you guys for approval on first week of February, so I got February fifth. Um, so the next meeting we have like this, uh, with you approving CDs, that means that the next day following, we are hitting send and the bid invites are going out, and we're soliciting bids from contractors. So, overall, right now, we're looking at, um, late January completion, early February for approval of the bid. And that we would open bids late February, early, early March, somewhere in there. Those bid dates can change, if we send them, if you get a snowstorm, sometimes you wanna delay it, so contractors can get their bids, but, uh, overall, um, for the time we took to make some of these changes, I'm pleased with where it's at, I think we're sitting in a good spot, we're gonna hit the market at the right time where we wanna be for bids.
Well, just remember, our board meetings are second and last, so it would be the twelfth, our meeting.
We, and, and that being said, I'm glad you brought that up, we potentially and likely will want to set up a special meeting just to save,
Okay, yeah.
Just especially Monday.
just to save that week, just to get out a week earlier, so, and we'll be in communication when we get a lot closer.
Okay. Yes.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we're the second and plus Mondays of the month.
Right.
Any other questions for Injensa at this time? I'm sure there might be anything between now and the time it comes up on the agenda. Thanks, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, at this point, uh, we have Apex, the representative from Apex out in the audience, uh, to give a presentation on their agenda item.
I'm Cody with Apex, thank you for having us tonight, so I don't have much of a presentation, it's more of an update and, uh, kind of background on where we are. Um, we started, uh, actually before you guys, well, went to a vote, we were working at that point with Superintendent Norman, and looking at ways to fund maybe possible origins of this project, um, through operational efficiencies, uh, and leverage those energy savings and operational efficiencies, uh, to fund capital improvements. We completed the preliminary assessments last year, it looked like you guys could, uh, fund, you know, up to three million dollars worth of, of capital items through those improvements. Um, that's not to say you would have to spend all three million, but that's what the flexibility you have, you could, you could fund up to three million. Um, it recently came back up, uh, the possibility of, again, funding, funding those improvements, so you kind of dusted off those preliminary assessments. Been working with Luke here at Injensa, Mike and Mark, and, um, actually, we kind of backed into the timeline, and to do that, um, to get, we wanna develop them in step within Injensa. So we don't want, when we go to bid, we don't want there to be redundancies in the bid packages or holes, we wanna make sure if you guys do choose to fund things, uh, through, you know, alternative, uh, funding, that work, we have separate bid packages for this scope that aren't included in that one, so nothing's getting doubled up, but also, the items that are developed through that tie in with the, the improvements they're funding, and to make sure everything's lockstep, kind of hand in glove, turnkey. Um, so, to do that, to hit that end of January timeline, we actually kind of figured we need to start working on this now. Um, and I know you guys haven't discussed it yet, so we have started bringing contractors up here, just kind of working at it at risk, because if you guys do choose uh, to pursue this, we wanna make sure we have time, and we wanna make sure we can hit that end of January deadline, so um, been working with Mike, we've had some contractors up to look at building envelope, uh, water conservation, uh, and some HVAC controls pieces, uh, we have lighting setup, lighting contractors set up, they're actually the end of this week. And then controls will be back, uh, in, in the next couple. Uh we have lighting setup, lighting contractors set up, but actually the end of this week and then controls will be back uh in in the next couple of weeks. To to fine tune those those scopes and costs and get better budgets for you guys. Um so timing wise, we uh we just wanted to set down right now as we move forward, we are are due to hit those Januaries. Be no problem working with them to make sure all those scopes are lined up. Um we don't miss anything. One thing on the controls, we are working with. Um we we don't sell any products or services. Um controls is is a bigger ticket item. Um so we're vendor agnostic there. So we're gonna work with the district to make sure you guys get the right control system long term. Um so as we develop that, we'll uh we'll really look at what's what's the best answer for a monitor in your building and uh the optimization of them. And then when you go to bid, there'll be an RFP to do this. There's a state statute um that these projects have to go through. That statute requires an RFP. So even in a hypothetical world where you said, hey, we love Apex, we wanna work with Apex, you guys have to go to RFP um to hire a company. And then through that RFP and so RFP selection process, um there's guaranteed costs and savings that'll be associated through that. Um and then they'll be developed in step with uh with the other improvements through Ingenza. So I'm mostly here to answer questions. I don't know how much you guys have discussed this as a board, but just kind of uh to answer questions or open discussion for any questions you have about the process or potential project.
So I I heard, and my ears were ringing, three million dollars.
Up to, yes.
Up to three million dollars and that's with your overview that you did last year.
Correct.
So this one is, I mean, okay, so it's gonna be more in depth. Are we talking the high school building and the new building?
The new building will be obviously built and designed to be as efficient as possible. So most of, most of the improvements are gonna come from the existing high school building is where you're gonna see your your biggest efficiency gain.
Okay, okay. Okay, I can understand doing that because the new building should be just far on.
Yes.
Yeah, don't give me. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So what happens if if we don't do this or hire anyone? I mean, you you've done an overview previously when Ingenza first came in and and looked at the whole project. What happens if we don't do this?
So as of right now, absolutely nothing. If you guys don't choose to pursue this, we just ask that you tell us as as soon as you come to that decision so we can kind of call off. You know, the contractors that we're bringing up here. And again, we typically wait to have a signed agreement before we do this. Um but really the best thing for you guys, the right thing for you guys is we have to start now to make sure um we can develop these scopes together. Um so as of right now, nothing would happen. You guys say, hey, we don't wanna pursue any uh improvements to the efficiency and then we would just stop where we're at. Um if you guys sign the agreement to continue the development of this, um and then you didn't hire Apex, there, three things would happen at the end of the development. Um one would be you guys, we develop it, you guys go to RFP, which you'll have to do, and choose us as the the best partner for the district. The cost of that development gets wrapped into the project. Uh the second scenario would be if we develop it, um we find a project that meets the statute and through the RFP, you decide to uh choose a different partner or just not do the project at all, which we hope you wouldn't do because um if it meets the statute, there is a project there that pays for itself. Um and then you take, take the information, the data, and you would move forward to that company and you just write us a check for our development of this. Um the third case would be that we develop the project, it does not meet the state statute, the uh payback requirements. In that case, you guys would not owe us anything, because we are telling you that you have a project. Um so if if that does not turn to be true, we're not gonna charge you, uh since we don't know what we're doing. So those are the three things. Um and the only way you would uh have to cut a separate check for the development to Apex would be is if you implemented the project with someone else or chose not to implement a feasible project.
So I I guess, I'm I'm looking at your scope of the work here. Steam to hot water boiler conversion, HVAC controls modifications, LED lighting conversion, destratification, water conservation, steam trap. Um renewable energy. And this might be more a question for Ingenza. But how can we go to bid if we don't know these things already? I mean, may it make sense?
That is why we're developing them together. I mean, like, we're talking on his end, but that's that's why it's important for us to get this developed by the time the bids come out. Otherwise, that is a problem, right? If if you guys go to bid, um and then later decide to do all this, you're just, you're not designing the same things twice. There's redundancies in the bid, um but that's exactly why we need to meet that January deadline, why we started developing it kind of in good faith. Just because otherwise we would not be able to do that.
Same, I think maybe you're getting that, like we we, we're looking at it probably with a different lens maybe, is like, do we need to do a steam to hot water conversion? Yes, we we estimated some of some high level savings, not to the level and degree that a performance contractor or an energy services company needs to look at it because they're guaranteeing the savings, if that makes sense. Yeah, we're, we both, we know the steam to hot water conversion needs to be done as part of the overall project, but we didn't go into it to depth. That an energy services company would need to for a performance contractor. Does that answer your question?
And so if you make these changes, if you do this project and it makes and it meets the the statutes, energy savings, it gets paid for by this. There's a statute that will pay for these projects.
Correct. Um typically St. Paul Port Authority is kind of the state's uh quasi recommended one. They they fund a lot of them, but even like Bank of America, US Bank, has programs set up through the state. Um is what we do then is we just go and see who who gives you guys the best interest rates. Um also, you can bond to your FA, um so you can bond it through that. Um the the funding can come from anywhere, but correct, someone else pays for the project. We have to guarantee the savings to you and through those guaranteed savings, then you guys will pay your debt service.
Then you invoke the statute, the statute and then you can get it done.
Correct.
And we're looking at the old, we're, I mean, we're looking at primarily the stuff we're gonna be doing in a high school, the old building, which I mean is gonna have energy savings, right?
Correct.
Correct. And I think could leverage, everybody understands, so it's, so your, you know, your utility budget is here. Doing steam and hot water conversion isn't gonna make it down here. You would take that difference over the term of that contract and and make agreements for that bond or what loan, whatever, however that is.
So the savings that you're getting is paying for the.
Yeah, so that's the the part where you get a project developed, you can understand how much savings there there are, what scopes. And then make decisions of how much would we want to commit, because I think part of this too is there's savings from going, closing two buildings and going to to one elementary school too. And that was part of a, just some discussions along with saying, well, what do we ask for in our levy? And wanna make sure that you're not, you know, if the district was looking and say, don't really think we need three hundred dollars a pupil unit of closing those those schools. And add that to the new levy, you know, dollar month is coming in, you don't, you don't wanna over commit those savings if you were factoring that into your operations over the next ten years. If that makes, makes sense. So I I don't know, or I was at least involved in, instead of asking for a thousand and he said, well, we've got those savings coming, let's ask for six hundred. So we didn't, wouldn't wanna spend that extra four hundred if you were coming, so it'd be something we wanna check with Alan.
And maybe just like, uh, I just wanna add maybe like an example of the relationship between Ingenza and the Apex would work. Um essentially, you know, we're, we're doing a steam to all water conversion. So for example, there's gonna have to be new boilers. Um when it comes to Apex coming in, you know, if they can put together a project that um meets the criteria. If those boilers could be a part of that project and that could be funded separately, what that would mean for us would be budget relief on our current project. Um but that's why we're talking about, we need to work hand in hand because we're doing our own thing, but at the same time, they're looking for eligible items um that may or may, may or may not move in or out. So that's where we do have to work closely together, just so that, you know, we don't have a situation where, you know, say we proceed with Apex and another project, all of a sudden we've got double the amount of boilers we need. That's what we're talking about when it comes to um gaps, misses or duplications.
But am I understand, I mean, with this project, I understand that the money comes somewhere, but it has to be paid by us first. I mean, we still have to have the money to be able to afford it until it all, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Am I asking the right question?
Yeah, so no, there certainly would be an opportunity for you guys to pay for it all, but that one, then it wouldn't, um to join the point, you'd have no budget alleviation from your current project.
Right, I mean.
This is because we are, because we have to guarantee it, the funding will actually come elsewhere. Like I said, the Bank of America, they'll actually write Apex the check for the project. And then the debt service, you guys are responsible for, but we have to guarantee that the savings will cover your debt service each year to the bank. That's why, that's why they're willing to fund it.
Okay, so but what I'm wondering is how far and above is that? I mean, are Alex, you would, I mean, how, are are we gonna be able to afford that debt? With it?
So I I think what Director Rice is trying to say, give me a.
No, go, because I, it's not coming out right for me.
You guys do the project, whatever funding institution um you find, you guys have found that you'd meet the criteria of one twenty three B point six five, I think it is. So you found the savings. And let's just say, um, the savings is gonna be five hundred thousand dollars over X amount of years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um ABC Bank is gonna pay you the cost for your work. Uh these, the uh school district will pay back that amount to ABC Bank with the savings that they are incurring in whatever it is, energy, energy savings. Am I understanding that correctly?
A hundred percent, yes. So instead of you just taking money that you're currently spending with the utility, you're just, that that money that allotment will stay in your operating budget. Instead of paying your utility, you're re-investigating your buildings. So your operating budget isn't gonna change. There's gonna be savings that you realize, but those savings will go towards your debt service.
Okay, I think I got a better, a better grasp.
To take those savings and toss it into a sinking fund to make sure that they get paid.
Right.
Or the ABC Bank gets paid, because you guys are paid, walk away. Signing her, see you later.
And we have to, we have to come back, obviously, for the life each year. There's a, that's per the statute as well, but obviously the the finance, whoever given the money also requires it. But we've come back each year and as long as you guys are paying that debt service, um we have to guarantee those savings on an annual basis.
So the RFP, we do that?
The district would send it out, correct. And we can, you're you're gonna use, we'll work with you, because you're gonna use a lot of the information we've get in this development um for that RFP, but yet the district would be responsible for sending it out and then they get the responses back and would make the decision on who.
Okay, and we make the decision if, other than the twenty three thousand dollars that we're gonna pay you, we make the decision on the contractor.
Correct, on the, on the company, yes, yep.
And then your guys are out of it.
Yes, if you chose to partner someone else, yeah, then we we hand over all the development work and you guys move on with a different partner.
But you're part of the RFP, are you not?
Sure, we would respond to the RFP.
You would?
Yes.
And it says here, within a hundred days, we'll have an answer, right?
Correct, of the findings, yes. We we have to develop it by January nineteenth, so we don't even have quite a hundred days, but yeah, correct.
Within a hundred days of when you start working?
Yes.
So that could be next month?
Yes, unfortunately, our real deadline is January nineteenth, I think it was, but correct, usually from the time the agreement's signed, we have a hundred days. In this case, we don't have that long, but yeah.
And then, so the, whoever the contractor is, but do you? Do you have a hundred days to tell us what our savings are, am I right?
Correct, we have a hundred days to develop the scope, yes, and get you guys the savings, correct, those numbers.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions? I just, I just have a question on the fee is twenty three thousand eight fifty, is that uh a flat fee that you guys normally charge? Or is that based upon the scope of the project or?
Correct, varies on project. Some are, some they, you know, depending on the scope, some take more to develop than others in time. And those are, that's just labor, um is all we're trying to come for, is the labor and time, materials it takes to to do that. Um but yes, correct, it's it's based on, each project's different based on the scope.
Is that negotiable?
The fee, we can certainly talk about it.
Have we paid Apex anything less than our.
Um, not, not for this.
I, I needed the initial.
The the initial ones is is no cost.
Okay. Use it. I mean, you know, it's.
Any other questions?
I won't have to do your job, but, no. Thank you.
Alex, you got any questions? I'm always looking at Alex. I'm looking for uh Ed Nod or.
Oh, I mean, I guess from maybe Mike worked with them and Ingenza, like, is this something that you recommend? Because this is in our expertise, obviously. I mean, is this something that's helpful to the, to the project?
I'm wondering if Alex is comfortable.
Or Alex, yeah, I think.
Well, from my understanding of it, it's.
Yeah.
Ageless, so.
That's kind of what I'm getting to, I think, too.
Other than the twenty four grand.
But I'm not actually.
Yeah. No.
Well, that actually gets wrapped in too. I mean, that gets paid for, you know.
Well, the yearly payment.
Oh, okay, okay.
We we pay that.
But it could pay for itself over a hundred years.
Yeah.
You know, the, a large example.
What is that, what is that?
Sorry, yeah, good, good point. Um the statute requires a fifteen year payback for school districts, so cities actually can do twenty years. But yeah, the the longest you guys could finance it for is fifteen years.
Up to fifteen.
Right, you can do it, you know, you'd make a five-year term if you wanted, but you cannot exceed fifteen.
I don't care.
Pretty much.
Do you guys guarantee it at fifteen or do you guys guarantee the ten? How does that work? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we have to guarantee it through the term. So if you guys do a five-year, we'll guarantee for five years.
So we have that option.
Correct, yep.
I don't, I don't like those long-term.
Jackie, the the biggest thing would be how much would we wanna buy of gas if that, if that came to us, that would be the only, one thing.
Right.
So if we get some projects done, yes, you can borrow gas, so that we don't need it, without, without, the study's gonna be helpful.
It'll be.
Apex or something else.
It'll be helpful at some point, you know, even after they do the study, we still can choose not to go for RFP.
Right. Right.
Right. Well, it it sounds like it pays for itself and it may, it sounds like it makes sense, but I guess not my area of expertise.
But I definitely understand it a lot more than I did before you guys, because I don't say that.
Yes, yes.
Boy provided some value then, alright.
Definitely provided value.
Yes.
Because sometimes it's like, if I don't talk about it, it's like, okay, now you can see that confused look on my face, but.
Yeah, I agree, definitely understand it a lot more.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
A lot more, Pete.
Board, anything else at this point? Okay, moving on. Alex, did you have anything?
I don't.
Just kinda hang out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number four, approving the agenda.
On motion approval.
Motion by Mr. Rahar.
Alright.
By the, this last be. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, approval of the consent agenda. These are the minutes of the October twenty third, two thousand twenty-three, we're gonna meeting. Payrolls for the month of October in the amount of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Accounts payable for the month of October in the amount of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents. And approve the transfer of Jaden Jarmer to job number two fifty-eight, transportation form, uh effective batch date November one, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I give him the motion?
So may. Jackie.
Motion by Director Patty Simon.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, personnel. Item eight, motion to approve the end of.
Item A, motion to approve the end of employment of Jessica Hannan, transportation foreman, effective October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So made.
Motion by Director Lappi.
Support.
Support by Director Prady Simon.
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve the hire of Larry Purman-Ansey to job number two fifty-seven, level two, boys, basketball coach, effective November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All motion approval.
Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, administrative business, motion to approve the payment to IEA in the amount of five thousand nine hundred dollars for the twenty-twenty-three third-year, uh, era inspection for Chisholm Public Schools as presented.
So made.
Motion by Director Lappi.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Director Prady Simon. Any discussion?
Do they have a new contract for every single thing they do with the school? I thought we had a contract with them to do this stuff. I don't, I guess I don't understand, I always thought that we had a contract that they did this stuff for us. But it's a separate contract every time they do something? Is that?
These are some annual, uh, contracts that have been approved for the last few years to be, to try to pull off and, you know.
I don't, I don't remember approving so many of these. IEA, I always thought it was like, once a year, you, they gave you a contract, they gave you a list of everything they did, but it seems like every time they do something, they give you a new contract.
If I remember, if I remember correctly, their contract expired before twenty-twenty-three. And we went through this back several months ago, all different things that they have to do, but they didn't have such a, a contract specifying their scope of work that I remember. That's what I remember.
I'll check in, Ed. Do that, uh, can you back up? I realize that doesn't affect tonight.
Just for public knowledge, I, I guess, uh, Mr. Purdean or, or Mr. Morrison, can you explain to us the AHRRA, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, inspection windows? And Director Raha stated that it expired-
I think it was right before twenty-twenty-three. So everything they've done since then-
It's right on here, in the contract, what it- Yeah, it's right on here, Spessos Hazard Emergency Response Act.
I just want to let the public know what we're talking about.
Looks like they're inspecting for asbestos containing building materials. It's required, it's required every year.
The most recent third-year inspection was completed in October of twenty-twenty, and now we're three years later, so.
There is a motion and support on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve policy number four thirteen, harassment and violence policy, and appendix A, the harassment and violence report.
Who make the motion?
Motion by Director Randa Soder. Support, support by Director Raha. Any discussion? I'd like to thank the Policy Board and the NSBA for their diligence. This is, this is something that, whether it's employees, kids, students, administrative staff, sometimes what you don't know, you don't know. And, and to have this updated, I think is, is very important for all of us. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five, a sign of a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, motion to approve the assurance of compliance with state, federal law prohibiting discrimination, and to direct the superintendent to submit the report as provided by Minnesota statutes and rules.
So made.
Motion by Director Lappi. Support, support by Director Raha. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just carry with me a second, I've got enough air to run my agenda. Item D, motion to approve design development plans as presented by Woodson and Incent, and Inchensa as presented.
All motion approval.
And so should this motion include that we want to add the design, the-
The swap, we'll call it the swap.
Well, this, you want to have a one, all one motion, because I think we also need to include the build of, of the fitness center, that was also kind of-
That it was the swap.
Yeah, that's the swap.
Okay, that's the swap.
That's the swap.
So you could, um, like I might say, we can approve the design as presented.
Yeah.
That did not include the swap, that included the athletic facility with the, um-
Addition that we-
The fitness center would be a alternate bit, is that correct? Look, my, I forgot on that one.
Mm-hmm.
Or we can accept the design as presented with the, for lack of a better term, I will call it the swap, or the fitness multipurpose room versus the athletic field upgrades. And I think that was your intention.
So with fitness center as a swap?
Correct.
And that's, and that's possible.
Yeah.
Possible, I will second that motion.
Support by Director Prady Simon. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, motion to approve the directed engineering study by Apex as presented. All motion approval. Motion by Director Raha.
I'll second.
Support by Director Prady Simon. Any discussion? I will say, at first, I was one hundred percent against this. There is still a fee for us. I would like to have our superintendent, should it pass, I'd like our superintendent to negotiate that fee, or at least try to negotiate that fee. We are not, we are not obliged or contracted to go through their recommendations. This motion would only be for them to show us where the improvements could be.
Mm-hmm.
Or the, and the savings could be.
Right. And I agree with you, because I was also confused as to what this was really for, until I heard the presentation. I feel like timing, right now is the time to do it. Because if they, you know, if they're gonna have that ready for, um, January eighteenth, when the bits go out, then we could use if we wanted to, those recommendations to bid better, get it, you know? So I, I think the timing makes sense to do it, if we're gonna do it.
I think one of the things too, also goes to my question of last meeting, I believe. And I asked Luke for financing options. Although, if we went through on the recommendations, should this pass, if we went through on the recommendations, and let's just say for argument's sake, Apex got the RFP. They are not going to pay for it. They're gonna work through other funding sources, so they can get their money, and then we eventually pay for it. We would also be doing that with other companies. If we decided to go with ABC Corporation to come in and say, hey, you're on mechanicals, you front up the five hundred thousand dollars, and then, then we'll pay you back over a period of ten years. Somewhat similar to that, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Another company can execute whatever they develop, somebody would have to develop it.
So I would like to amend the motion uh, to also state, um, the superintendent or director of facilities to try and negotiate the fee.
I'll accept that.
Likewise.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, motion to approve the purchase of services agreement between Independent School District Number seven oh one, Hibbing, and Independent School District Number six ninety-five, Chisholm for the Director of Teaching and Learning from November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
That should, yeah, mine's a twenty-four, yours is corrected, mine's twenty-five, okay. Yours almost got corrected, good.
Yeah, having hidden. Just look at the board, no, this is something that we have been talking about with our joint meetings, um, with Hibbing. It was presented to us at more extended hours than, yes, uh, quite, quite significant anymore.
Yeah, like, um, just a couple of things to, and I was, you know, it's, it's cost a little bit of money. Um, the one thing I really wanted to get out of personally is I wanted to get out the academies, the career academies for these kids, so that, um, we're, uh, basically building skills for career preparation. There's gonna be a lot of digging, if this is approved, there'll be a lot of digging into curriculum, meeting the teachers for Kerry and Dell, so that we can kind of determine, uh, if we wanna do the medical pathways, what do we gotta, what do we have to enter our health class? What do we have to enter maybe a biology class, um, to do some of these things? So there's a cost with it, and I think, um, we, we shorten the hours, we're not going half and half if we decide to do this. Um, so that cost went down significantly, sig- significantly, um, but it's still a cost. But it's not redundant, I think, previously, with the Director of Teaching and Learning positions. It's sort of redundant, because we have two people here already that are doing things. Um, but we have nobody doing career academies, career pathways, and so we specifically go after that. Um, and keep in mind, this, this, at Hibbing, this was a full-time position for one person in, in the previous, so she's gonna handle two districts amongst, amongst other duties too, so she'll, it'll be a busy, it'll be a busy position, but at the same time, if it's, if we're not happy with it, it is, and we don't want to, on this road, relative, we can help it, but there's, there is an out, it's only two years long. Um, and I, I talked to Alex a couple of weeks ago, if we, and I emailed the board about that, how we can possibly fund it with some, uh, money that we're making out of interest, if we pull this, our funds out, which you did, or, or, so. Um, and that's, and again, that's projected, because the interest rates can change, but we can, we can fund it that way, so.
And her presentations, what are these?
I mean, she definitely knows what she's doing and has a good grasp on things, so.
She does, she does, I mean, it's a chunk of money, don't, don't get me wrong, but I think this is a start where we can really, um, start building some relationships, uh, that are strictly academic with Hibbing, and, um, and I think I'm hoping down the road, three to five years down the road, that we can start sharing more resources, um, which will make us a little bit more efficient too.
Well, it's not gonna be competitive. That's, this kind of career pathways type with single records, like, where we can offer the same, you know, type of programming for people who know what they wanna go into, and then do it efficiently enough, or, I mean, it's, it's good, it's very good.
Or fit out what they wanna go into.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, no, these two is, and, um, yeah, this is not, nobody's ever discussed this with Hibbing, and I haven't had this conversation, but for example, we posted in the past for like a fax teacher, um, a couple of times, and we had zero applicants, it's, it's just not a full-time job at Chisholm, but maybe down the road, um, maybe it's point eight at Hibbing, and and we pick up a little point two, so we can have that. And like I said, this is, Hibbing is, I've not had this conversation, Hibbing hasn't had that conversation with me yet, it's just an example of some things were, together as two districts, we can be a little bit more efficient down the road, and I think, you know, if we, um, agree to this position, I think Kerry can kind of bridge that gap between the two districts, since, because she'll, she'll have her hands in the both districts, she'll kind of know, and understand the schedules.
Well, I've always hoped that you could offer more electives, like, you know, something to that effect, because there's, just, you just don't have, neither district can have like, six different languages, or, you know, all these different things you could offer, but, you know, there's definitely, there's some kids that wanna take those, so I think, I'm always, I'm always excited about, like, curriculum stuff, so I get-
Yeah, and I think we have in the past been lacking there, so, we can, we can do to make things better, and I think it's gonna make it a little bit easier on our counselor too, I mean, to have somebody, you know, else helping.
Appreciate you elaborating on that beforehand too, before we made the decision.
Yeah.
And then, um, I think, no, it's positive for our district, I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
I have one, one thing.
Levy?
Yeah.
Supported by Satter.
Is this a year-round job, twelve months, for her?
Yeah, it will be, it will, she, so, there are principals over there, I believe, they get, uh, I wanna, don't hold me in this, but I believe they get most of July off. They're fifty-two weeks, but I believe they, but they take their vacation over the line, but it's-
Okay, so that, okay, I get it now, okay.
A lot of it's connecting with businesses too, so.
Yeah.
Working on internships with the two districts, the kids in the businesses, local businesses and all that, so, there's work in summer.
Okay, very good.
Reduces our, yes, oh, too, costs.
Yeah, it will be great, yes, we have all those options here, and my kids, and district.
Do you have a second on that?
Yeah, me.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash thirteen, accepting donations.
So made.
All support, yeah.
Motion by, supported by Director Raha, uh, Director Randa Satter, can you, you roll call, please?
Um, Satter, yes. Rice?
Yes.
Prady Simon?
Yes.
Lappi?
Yes.
Raha?
Yes.
Or Charkesi?
Yes, and I'd like to thank all those individuals and businesses for, for joining into the school district, school district, everyone did helps, thank you. Motion carries, item number eight, any discussion? Item nine, information, everybody saw, um, Ms. Barney's email regarding community education. For the most part, I think things are going well for her. She still struggles a little bit with the after-school.
Yeah.
Uh, and was hoping that we'd get a little more help on that, but, um, I've had the opportunity to stop by the after-school, and, um, there's a few days where it'd be very busy. And there are some days where it's not so busy, and it seems to show that our after-school director has, I appreciate that. And you have your enrollment- And you have your enrollment numbers in our packet, it looks like we're maintaining, uh, I think what we've done, like, five in the beginning of the year, or somewhere in there, um, which is, is very good. You have to remember when students contract, the age of eighteen, you have your own choices, yeah. Uh, just as a reminder, we, and next meeting, we will be setting our truth and taxation date. We'll be setting that date, will probably be the first meeting in December.
And it has to be at six.
And after six P M. We'll be doing that, but, oh, uh, with that said, I will entertain the motion to adjourn. Everybody, Barney Simon, is that it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?